All right, well, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Thank you especially to our candidates, Marta Trillas, Tracy Maclennan, sorry, and Jane Aris. I'm Mindy Carroll, I am president of the Bellevue PTSA Council. PTA is the nation's oldest and largest child advocacy organization, working at multiple levels to support our families. National PTA advocates nationally for policies, it supports our state PTAs, which advocate at every state level for the issues most pressing in that state. Council works understate supporting our local PTAs. In Bellevue, we have 28 PTAs, one for every school, including our digital, our online school digital discovery, working to support every local child, family, and school staff member. These candidate, school board candidate forums are one of the ways that council works to inform our families. We are always grateful for school board candidates. It's a hard job. It's a job that involves even more work than PTA for about the same amount of money. And it's pretty incredible to me that we have such dedicated people stepping up, wanting to do this job for us. We're very lucky in Bellevue to have each and every one of you looking to serve this role. I'm also going to thank tonight, we have Kristi Schlesinger and Zara Islamy, our council advocacy co-directors. Kristi is going to moderate tonight's forum and Zara will be moderating the chat and helping direct any audience questions to our candidates. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Kristi.
Okay, one more slide. Okay, Washington State PTA has a biennial legislative priorities. So we wanted to just share that tonight. Number one is closing the education funding gap. So that's the thing, the hot topic that our PTAs have been working so hard for over the last couple of years. And we plan to host another town hall this fall. So stay tuned for more information on that. I'm a couple others that are in the top five include the student mental health crisis, funding inclusion and supports in special education, preventing and reducing gun violence and suicide, and expanding school construction funding options. Here's a quick map of our Bellevue School District and the five different, here, let me see if I can take this off for just a second. The five districts. All Bellevue voters will vote for all district races and a district director must live in the district they run for when they file to run for the school board. All directors represent all voters in the Bellevue School District after they have been, that they become a director. I think there's one more. Sorry, one second. My slides aren't working very well here. And then our Bellevue School Board candidates for this year, District Three, Tracy Maclennan and Marta Trills, and District Five, Jane Aris. And we'd like to kick off the evening tonight to introduce Marta and she would like to share an announcement that she had made earlier today.
Hi, everyone. Well, today's kind of a sad day for me because as you know, this morning, Dr. Kelyar Maki just shared with the entire school community that I have decided for personal reason just to step down as a school board director. So what it means that Thursday will be my, unfortunately, will be my last school board meeting. And after that, I will no longer serve as a school board director. And even if my, my name and my, I will need to continue to run because it's too late to withdraw. Well, I just want to share with the community that for personal reasons, I cannot be there. I want also to share why, why I love so much Bellevue School District. I came as an immigrant eight years ago and it was amazing how the Shinook PTSA helped me and my first friends were from the PTSA. Bellevue School District also gave me the opportunity to work for them. So that was amazing. But the most amazing thing was that it helps me to raise two amazing kids and they were very different. And I am very honored to be as a mom, as a school board, and as a former staff to work in a, in a school district that care about each and every student, no matter their origin, no matter what they need. So that makes me very proud to be here. And just also sharing that I think we have an amazing leader. I really like Kelyar Maki vision and we have a spectacular school board members. And from the bottom of my heart, I have the feeling that we are in the right track. We are on the right track. We have a plan and hope we are on the track of our financial stabilization. The together, we can do it. But together, that means the students, families, the staff, community departments, and the entire community of Bellevue. Together, we can go through it and hope, even if I cannot continue to guide this work, hope everyone is going to take the piece and we are going to work all together. And the last thing that I, I would like to share is that I want to support Tracy, my opponent. It's not my opponent. It's a person, it's a PTSA, it's kind of, she has been in the schools. She, well, she has been working from the bottom of her heart for more than 10 years and she has been very important in the community. So I feel very confident and I talked to her today and we are more or less aligned. And she promised me that she's going to work to close the gap and to, to work for every NHS student. So I am super glad, I have been very honored. And thank you for everyone that just gave me this opportunity to, just to be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marta. We really appreciate you coming tonight and to sharing that from your heart. I know today's been a really hard day for you. So please know that we're sending our love your way.
Thank you.
All right, I think, I think we're ready to kick off the forum. I'll share just a few details about how tonight will go. And then hopefully the timer works here. So Tracy and Jane will be answering our forum questions tonight. Each of our candidates will have 90 seconds for an opening statement and 90 seconds for a closing statement. And then we'll have a few questions in the middle. Each candidate will alternate as to who goes first to answer the questions. And with that, let me get my timer up. I think, I think we're ready to begin. Okay. Okay, hold on, sorry. Is it going, okay, let me pause. Okay, Tracy, would you like to start our opening or your opening statement for tonight?
Certainly. Thank you very much, everyone, for the opportunity to speak with you today and also to Bellevue PTSA Council for hosting and Lake Hills Neighborhood Association for co-hosting. And to Director Sries, who I have felt such support from and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your, your work so far for the last six and a half months has been wonderful to watch. I certainly have attended the meetings and have appreciated all your hard work. And I know that others appreciate it so much as well and what you've done, how you've done so much on behalf of all of our students. I am a proud graduate of the Bellevue School District, shaped by its high expectation of academic excellence. And over the past decade, as was said, I've advocated passionately for the transformative power of our public education schools. As a parent and a PTSA officer, I have partnered with educators and district leadership, supporting students and strengthening our schools. My background bridges the arts and finance, informing my deep appreciation for how students learn in diverse ways and how we must fund that learning responsibly. With over 20 years in accounting, I bring a strong financial expertise to ensure effective oversight, to preserve our high quality and diverse programming. Implementing strategic choices with our limited resources is key to providing every student in BSD with opportunity, support, and success. And that goes really quickly.
I was just thinking that, that goes really quickly. Okay, I'll try to keep everyone on track here. Sorry, I'm trying to find the button again. Jane, would you like to kick off your opening statement?
All right. Good evening. My name is Jane Aris and I'm a parent of three, former educator, a wife, a community member of Bellevue for over 28 years, and a current Bellevue School Board Director for position five. Thank you to PTSA for hosting this forum and to the voters for electing me into the seat in 2021. I am passionate about education. I was adopted from South Korea as an eight-year-old arriving in the US, not knowing English. I thrived with the help of teacher who made me feel supported and capable and safe. I was determined to provide that same support for all children. With this in mind, I earned bachelor's and master's degree in general and special education and taught here in Bellevue as well in South Seattle. As an educator, I've worked with diverse students, including special education students, highly capable English language learners and more. During my tenure on the school board, I promised to rebuild trust, address mental health challenges, ensure equitable access to high-quality education for each and every student. Together with our community, we were hired a great superintendent, improved transparency, developed a strategic plan to close educational gaps. There's a lot of work still ahead. I will continue to focus on educational excellence by leveraging our understanding and effective classroom practices, my experience with vulnerable students, and my lived experiences. As a school board, I will continue to do the hard work. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you both so much. We will go on to the next question about values. Jane, if you could go first, the question will be, what one to two qualities or strengths of the Bellevue School District do you value most and would work to preserve?
Oh, let's see. What is the one to two values that I would work to? You know, I think our values are pretty well stated in our mission vision and as, as statements. One of the things is to make sure that we will strive to help our students be, you know, our mission says strive for, strive to make sure our students can be creators of their future world. That means tooling them for what the future holds in our complex and diverse community. And, and that means celebrating all of them and who they are. And so I think that is worth preserving. The other is who, well, it's an extension. Oh, man, you only want one to two. There's so many. I, student-centered is probably the second largest thing. Or actually, it's the first thing. I think all decisions should be around our students. But how do we support each and every student? Not just the top or the, not just the middle, each and every student. That means to be thoughtful and mindful and reflect and include their voices as much as possible in all of our decisions. It may also means that we take a step back and slow down a bit. It may not be what we as a parents want, but that is the best thing to do for the long haul. Oh, time runs out fast.
It does, it does. All right, Tracy, what one to two qualities or strengths of the Bellevue School District do you value most and would you work to preserve?
Well, I'm going to cheat a little bit and lump some values together that I believe go together in the same category. And that, I see Jane laughing. That equity, belonging, and a human-centered learning and leadership is my first one. So BSD's vision emphasizes that people are valued and known, that those who speak multiple languages or share different cultures are respected and that all students and families feel safe, seen, and valued. So that's from the we belong, from the strategic vision and commits to building human-centered systems and relationships, to creating a beloved community that we hear Dr. Maki certainly talk about quite often and to interrupting discrimination while ensuring dignity and freedom from hate and bullying. The second values are academic excellence and innovation. We need to protect and invest in advanced learning, AP choice schools, dual-language schools, and support for teachers to adopt innovative teaching strategies. We need to maintain our rigorous standards while giving teachers flexibility and again, the support to innovate. And we need to ensure financial oversight and resource allocation support to both core instruction and innovation without sacrificing one for the other. Under time.
Awesome. Okay, I just realized with only two of you, you have to talk twice in a row. So sorry about that. All right, on to our next question. We're going to talk about, or the question is around our budget and financial stability. Bellevue is under binding conditions with state oversight. How would you prioritize limited resources to protect critical student services, support staff, and academic programs while ensuring financial stability?
Well, as you said, Bellevue is under state binding conditions, so financial stability is non-negotiable. But that cannot come at the cost of our programs and services that matter the most for our students and families. My first priority would be to protect core student services, special education, early literacy, math supports, mental health and counseling, and the advanced learning and APIV programs that make Bellevue stand out and that make people want to move here. These are critical for both equity and excellence and cutting them would cause long-term harm. So we want to avoid that. I would also work to preserve our strong instructional model, like the seven-period day, which I think differentiates us significantly from other districts around the area, and ensure we maintain support staff in classrooms as best as possible and schools because they are essential for student safety and belonging. So to do this responsibly, I bring my background in finance and my years of district-level PTA leadership to help evaluate where we can increase efficiency, especially in the places we've already done so, central administration and non-instructional spending. But I believe in using data to assess which programs have real impact, which can be scaled back or maybe redesigned so that they are maybe more inclusive. I also support BSD's approach to preserving high-impact instruction while reducing costs through shared services and a smarter use of technology. And we must continue strong advocacy in Olympia, pushing for fair state funding in special education, transportation, and basic services so we're not forced to make impossible choices.
That's so fast. That was a good wrap-up, great wrap-up.
That was really good.
All right, Jane, how would you prioritize limited resources to protect critical student services, support staff, and academic programs while ensuring financial stability?
First of all, I want to start with saying, you know, it is unfortunate that we are in this position and apologize to our community for the, not the great place that we're in. That said, to address this, I think there is no one magic bullet. There is multi-pronged process that we have to take into consideration and act on. The first is that before cutting, we have to look at what are ways that we could advocate to increase budget. Like Tracy has said, we have to work with the legislators to continue to advocate for stronger funding and actually live up to the paramount duty that our constitution states. And that includes special education, which we have pretty much never fulfilled. And secondly, we have to look at how do we, where can we be more efficient? There's always opportunity for efficiency, but that is, you have to look at a couple of different ways, one internally and externally. You're looked, both looking at data, hard data, as well as qualitative and quantitative both. And as far as cutting, you need to look at, I honestly, I cannot make that decision myself. It is, I think, a collaboration with our community as we have done in this past, in this past year. Okay.
If you, if you want to finish your thought, that's okay.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's has to be done within collaboration. We need to understand what our community wants, what our student feels is important. Mental health is not something state funds, but we manage to keep some of our mental health supports because that was very clearly stated by our community, both our student staff and our teachers and our students, all of the above, that it, how important it is. So we worked around that to pull as much as we could. And it's not a good place, but it is important.
Yep, yep. All right, great. On to our next category of equity and academic gaps. Not all students in Bellevue are thriving. Oh, who, Jane's going first on this one, sorry. Just making sure I have everyone lined up here. Not all students in Bellevue are thriving. What specific strategies would you use to close opportunity and achievement gaps while maintaining high standards for all students?
Oh, I would say there are, as a former educator and a special educator, I know there are many tools that we, as, as a special educator, that we get to use to help close that gap. It is many of these things we could apply into general education. Some of those things which I have advocated for consistently in the last past four years is everything from PSYOP and GLAD, which is our tools for helping, working with our multilingual learners to MTSS to really scaffold in a way to support our students from falling into special ed when they could be just pushed gently pushed back into general classroom and making sure they're thriving in there as well as UDL. I would love for our overall, I think that would help really decrease some of the challenges and the overall needs in budget as well. But most importantly, we need to make sure that some of the fundamental curriculums are solid. And one of the things that worked hard to make sure that we adopt was science of reading and the basic level of making sure our students have the skill set to decode and read on their own and not be reliant on others and actually be free to learn when they need to at the age that is appropriate. Those are some, there is many more and I'm out of time.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. All right, Tracy, what specific strategies would you use to close opportunity and achievement gaps while maintaining high standards for all students?
As you said, not all students in Bellevue are thriving and that's unacceptable. To close opportunity and achievement gaps while maintaining high standards, I would focus on three key strategies. First, and I think Jane actually alluded to this, we need strong early intervention in literacy and math, making sure that every student gets the foundation that they need from day one. BSD is already rolling out a new literacy curriculum and I would work to ensure it's implemented with fidelity and equity. Second, I would support, well, I do support culturally responsive teaching and expand multilingual programs so that students from all backgrounds feel seen, supported, and challenged rather than lost, which is something that I, while it isn't my lived experience, I have heard many times that there's that feeling of being lost when you don't have those support tools. And third, I'd ensure decisions are guided by real data and informed by the voices of students and families most impacted by those decisions. We can and must hold high expectations for every student and give each one the tools and support to meet those high standards. We can, this is kind of a little bit on a tangent, but we, our kids need to graduate ready for the real world and that is different for every child. It could be college, technical training, it could be the workforce. And we need to make sure that we are giving each child the, the skill set that they need for their future and goals.
Great, wonderful. Thank you both so much. Those were excellent answers. Our next category for this evening, I'll try to be, try to make it more exciting here, is,
More exciting.
I'm like, my voice, I hope it's not going out. I'm really, should have handed the baton tonight. Our next category is technology and future skills. So Tracy, we'll have you go first. What, around artificial intelligence? What should the role of AI be in Bellevue schools? If using AI is an essential skill for the future, how should the district prepare students to use it responsibly and effectively?
As a BSD graduate and parent, I understand the importance of preparing our students for the future and artificial intelligence is in our present and our future. It is increasingly integral to various fields and our students must be equipped to navigate and utilize it responsibly. To achieve this, I advocate for integrating AI education across all grade levels, emphasizing ethical considerations, data privacy, and most importantly, critical thinking. By embedding AI concepts within our curriculum, we can ensure that students not only understand how AI works, but also the societal implications that it carries because they need to understand, is someone trying to convince them of something? Sell them something? Is it fact? This is the critical thinking that is so important as AI moves us very, very quickly into the future. Additionally, BSD's commitment to UDL or Universal Design for Learning ensures that all students, regardless of their background or abilities, has access to AI education. And this approach, of course, fosters an inclusive environment, which BSD works in to get across in all aspects of education where every student can thrive. By proactively incorporating AI into our educational framework, we empower our students to become informed, ethical, and innovative contributors to society and at a time where the world is just moving so quickly.
Wonderful, thank you so much. All right, Jane, what should the role of AI be in Bellevue schools? If using AI is an essential skill for the future, how should the district prepare students to use it responsibly and effectively?
Well, I believe that with every innovation, there is a possible harm and there is possible gain and AI is no different. And we can't shy away from technology, which seems scary. I think it is best for us to, as a district, to embrace and find ways to empower our students in a most safe way. With that in mind, I have been advocating to see how we could best leverage AI in our schools for our, to close gap for our students with most significant needs to those who are advanced, as well as how can we make sure they're safe, they're safe as they learn? And as Tracy had mentioned, it is important that we teach our tools, not just empower, but tool them to be critical thinkers, to know how to serve the, our complex technology systems and tools and to best support them as they move forward into, into their future world. With that in mind, I have worked with our legislators, our federal leaders and with our staff to make sure that these are being addressed, making sure that safety is constantly being thought of. Just spoke with Congresswoman Del Benny about this as well as, you know, work with our staff to make sure there's the protocols that is put into place around AI before the school even started. All right, there you go.
Thank you so much. All right, our next category is around safe and supportive schools. So I will have, is Jane, Jane goes first this time, right? Okay. Around mental health, student mental health needs continue to grow. What steps should the district take to better support student well-being and access to services? Oh, you're on mute.
There we go, sorry. Mental health is one of the things that I, you know, was on my top priority when I ran in 2021. And it is still on a concern based upon my constant conversations with students and taking pulse, what are their concerns? Mental health is coming up regularly and inconsistently. I, you know, unfortunately, funding at the state level is not great and federal level, there's a lot of challenges. That said, it does not mean that we need to shy away from and need finding ways to provide, addressing the need that is here. It's complex. We need to make sure that we are tooling our students, maybe with a better curriculum, making sure they feel empowered, that they could talk, provide, continue to provide mental health support. And maybe, And maybe even, and this is one of the things I brought up on Monday meeting, is to see, are there avenues for our students to be, join that field? Knowing that there is. We also need to look at technology and how it's impacting our mental health of our students in us. In a best way that we can minimize the the negative impacts of that to on our students. There is no one space that is um creating this challenge. It is, there are many different avenues and we have to look at all of them. And we have to kind of dig one at a time as we, it comes up, we need to see what are the uh answers or solutions that. We need to put into place to address that.
Wonderful. Alright, Tracy, same question, student mental health needs continue to grow. What steps should the district take to better support student well-being and access to services?
Uh student mental health is a top priority for me as well. Um BSD has made significant strides in supporting student well-being, but there's always more we can do. Um as soon as financially possible, we should increase our M-HAT team. Um the mental health assistance team or M-HATS are, were significantly reduced due to budget constraints, and we are grateful to partners like. Bellevue Schools Foundation, who donated funds to bring back some additional M-HAT counselors for this year. Additionally, the district partners with CareSalus to connect, connect students and families with mental health and substance use providers. Um regardless of insurance status, so we need to continue to partner with our community um partners, sorry for that repeat. Um to further support our students, I would encourage implementing a stronger cellphone usage policy. There is a great deal of data out there that. Uh says that that cellphones um are obviously a distraction and increase anxiety. We need to minimize distractions and social media pressures during the school day, which can negative negatively affect our students' focus and their well-being. Um we need to expand access to assistance by increasing the number of mental health professionals, as I said. Um we need to enhance prevention programs like signs of suicide, which we have in some of the schools, to help students recognize and address mental health concerns early. Uh strengthen those community partnerships to provide comprehensive support services. And promote mental health literacy by integrating mental health education into the curriculum to reduce stigma. If we can prioritize these steps, we can create a supportive environment where every student has the resources. They need to thrive both um emotionally and academically.
Wonderful, good job. Please finish your.
That's very fast.
It is really quick. Alright, um. And Jane, you already answered this question, right? Or no? No, I'm forgetting. Okay, uh looking ahead. Alright, our last category is around the district vision and leadership. Uh around equity, what should uh Tracy, we'll go first on this one. What should equity look like in the Bellevue School District? And are changes needed in how we approach equity policies and practices?
Um equity in BSD means ensuring that every student feels a sense of belonging, has access to high-quality education, and is supported to reach their full potential. While BSD attracts families due to its academic excellence, not all students are experiencing it equally. So we must meet students where they are and provide targeted support, including um early literacy, high-impact tutoring, expanded AL opportunities. And community engagement for support services. We must continue to evaluate and refine our equity policies to address emerging challenges. Um and ensure that they effectively meet the diverse needs of our students. This includes um ongoing professional development for staff, enhancing family and community engagement. And regularly reviewing our practices to ensure that they align with our equity goals and strategic vision. Uh as a member of this community, I am committed to advocating for policies and practices that uphold the principles of equity. Ensuring that all students in Bellevue have the opportunities and the support that they need to thrive. Um. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Wonderful. Alrighty, um Jane, same question, what should equity look like in the Bellevue School District? And are changes needed in how we approach equity policies and practices?
Right, well, equity, I think uh Tracy did a very good job of kind of nailing it, is that equity means that all of our students. Receive what they need to be successful and so that they can be a functional, healthy community member. Um the need is different for each student and the the. And the resources are different, and we need to come to realization that e- equity is not equal. Um, our community is dynamic, it's complex. We have hundred fifteen different languages, which means that much different cultures and as well as economic challenges and needs. We need to be able to um come to the understanding that that means we need to. Um gain more tools in our pocket to address the different needs in the classroom, which is. Uh pretty phenomenal. It's an opportunity and a challenge all at the same same time. Does that mean where our equity policy needs to be evolved? Yes, with time, it definitely does. But how we started in two thousand eighteen versus what is now, what was ten years for fifty years, what we need is different. And I'm sure it will be different in the future, so we will have to constantly look at it. And reflect back with our community to see how much we could, how much we need to change to make sure that we are doing what we need to do. I think at this current time, our uh strategic plan is doing a good job of trying to address that need.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Perfect. Okay, great. I do just want to mention, we have a little bit extra time tonight. Um. And so if any of our community members have any questions, we're going, we're going to give Jane and Tracy both. Um a minute and a half for their closing statements, but if you could, if you have any questions for them, we will take a couple of questions from. The chat tonight, so if you have any questions, please put them in there and Zara, and I will help moderate them. Alright, um so closing statements, who did opening statement first? Now I don't remember. Tracy did. Okay, Jane, would you like to start uh your closing statement first?
Okay, so are we doing closing statement and then questions or? Is there no questions therefore, we're doing closing statements?
I'm not sure. Maybe should we take questions from the audience first? I guess we could do that too. I'm not sure, the at the Lake Hills Forum, I think we did closing statements and then we asked questions from the audience, but we are open to.
Okay, I could go ahead and do my closing statement and then then move forward.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, so. When I was elected as a board director during the COVID pandemic, I made three key promises. To reestablish trust in our learning community, address the mental health emergency, and ensure equitable access to high-quality education for every student. I worked tirelessly on these goals. We hired an outstanding superintendent and improved transparency in in our systems. We developed a strategic plan to close educational gaps that was community voice-driven and particularly for our most vulnerable students. As a school board director, I'll continue to focus on educational excellence by leveraging our deep understanding of effective classroom practices based on research. My experience as a bridge builder among diverse communities and my personal journey as an English-language learner, homeless orphan individual. As well as a parent of three unique individuals who accessed all three layers of our education. I am dedicated to represent our Dever School District, centering community values, prioritizing our children's interests in every decision. My name is Jane Riss and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. See, Tracy, if you would like to give us your closing statement, thank you.
Sure. Um I want to thank everyone again for listening in this evening and for the great questions of the um. Uh Bellevue Council and um I want to thank you for hosting. I also want to thank Director Trias for her kind words and and her endorsement. With limited dollars, we must make strategic choices that ensure that every student in BSD has access to opportunity, support, and success. My twenty years in accounting equip me with that expertise to provide guidance to make some of these decisions. I've spent over a decade advocating for the public schools that shaped me. I have served in several leadership positions in the PTA and other nonprofit boards, working side by side with educators and district leadership to support students. And strengthen our community. I believe in the power of public education to transform lives. I'm running for the school board to continue serving the community that raised me. I am committed to ensuring that every child in BSD has equitable access to the opportunities that they need to thrive. My priorities include closing those learning gaps, rebuilding community trust through transparency, and expanding opportunities in dual credit. Steam, world languages for our global community, and CTE. As a current BSD parent, I am deeply connected to the daily realities and hopes of our families. And it is my pleasure to experience these and work with district leadership to resolve issues and celebrate our successes. I also humbly ask for your vote.
Wonderful, thank you both so much. It does look like we have a few um questions popping up in the chat.
Yes, thank you. We actually didn't have any questions when you started your closing statements, but we have had a couple of great ones come in now, so. Um Christie, do you see those or do you want me or Zara to read them out?
I do see, um I do see, um let's see who went first that time. I guess we can do, um. Tracy, if you'd like to take this first question, if budget, time, and politics weren't constraints. What's one bold change you'd champion for this district?
Oh, that's like pie in the sky world, um. If if none of that was a constraint, I would uh, I would want to. Uh review and overhaul the um special services, sorry, special needs um programming. I would want uh input from our families to uh focus on a human-centered. Uh way of communicating so that it isn't just, um not that this is what the district is doing, but not just the legal. Requirements, but rather what each individually fa- i- individual family is looking for and and needs. And this actually could go for any of our programs, and if we're talking ideal world, no budget, no time, and no politics. Um that is something that I think every program could benefit from, to get the impact, but to do that takes time. It takes people, it takes um true uh true communication where. Uh you are not just saying, well, this is our response, but this is our response for you. This is our response for you, and it's not us telling you, it was a communication, a collaboration between the students, the families, the teachers. The dis- the leadership, the um community partners. So in my dream world, we'd have all the money to do that, we would add mental health. Uh uh again, bring back those twenty M-HAT uh counselors, because they were doing such great work, and our family engagement specialists. So that's where I would do it.
Thank you so much. That was uh like, wouldn't that be a dream if we could just have all the money like?
And the military can have bake sales.
Exactly. Okay, Jane, what would your um pie in the sky be?
Pie in the sky, oh. Okay, um I'm in the same boat as Tracy. I I do think it is really important that we bring our M-HATS back. It's been um a blessing for our students, given our complex world, it is, it is a need that we. It that honestly, I think every school district should have. Um. I also would love to see every student have access to be bilingual, to truly be able to embrace our global society. It doesn't mean that every child has to learn a foreign language, but uh you know, second language, even ASL, I would love to see ASL. Um I would, but most importantly, going back to the fundamental. I would love for us to achieve what we're supposed to do, which is to make sure every student is successful. That means we have to fully embrace and. And support every student, especially our students are furthest away from educational justice, special education, constantly underfunded, constantly. We have a lot of growth in that space. Um. Our. Our curriculum embraces all of our students and they're there, them and who they are. That includes. Uh which means that we have a curriculum, our history, that is fully encompassing, oh, gosh, that buzzer. I'm in my own world, you gave me like, oh, I could do have anything, okay.
On and on. We can talk all day about these things.
Yes, but you know, I would love, i- i- there's one thing I'd love to add, our teachers will love to be too old. That is the thing I hear the most. The problem is always the budget and time. And if we have no constraints, I think our teachers be. Most of our teachers will be thrilled to have and be too, so they can support each and every other student.
Absolutely, absolutely. Alright, we have a question from Jessica. Jane, we'll do you first on this response. How do you feel about BSD no longer offering summer reading, summer math to middle and high school students? And how do you feel about students reading fewer books in ELA curriculum, sixth through twelfth grade? My daughter read two full novels last year in tenth grade and in eighth grade read only an excerpt of Animal Farm instead of the entire novel. I'll give you.
How do I feel? Oh, I'm a big proponent inbox. Um if you come to my house, you'll find way too many books. Um but the. So wh- what do I feel if budget wasn't a constraint, it'd be great to have that back. Um, the reality is is. Uh is, and this is a philosophical question of, is more better? I don't know. Um I definitely say we have to be more effective. But opportunity, I think we should provide the opportunity, not everybody will be able to. Achieve and access it in the way that we would like for for them to, because everyone's lives are a bit more complex. We have students who have to work. To help, you know, their families and, you know, needs met. Um. But that said, I I think if we have the time and the luxury and the um staffing. It would be great to have those things back.
Wonderful. Hold on, I'm trying to find my timer. Okay, found it. Uh Tracy, your response?
Um first, I have to say that I don't know that all of that is happening because I'm not currently on the board. So um please forgive me if it's a stumble through for me, but I'm concerned about those changes. Summer reading and math are tools to keep students learning over the break, to prevent learning loss, especially for kids who maybe don't have access to extra support at home. And removing them risks widening the very opportunity gaps that we're trying to close. Um if students are reading fewer books in ELA, that reduces exposure to new ideas, vocabulary, critical thinking, and reading matters, as Jane said. Um from my experience as a parent, PTA and PTA leader, and someone who cares deeply about equity, I believe every student deserves both. The challenge and the support. So I think ideally, again, assuming that this is correct, we want to try and restore. Learning programs in, summer learning programs in reading and math for middle and high school students and and elementary if we can, but due to funding constraints. We have to make them targeted. It can't be across the board, maybe in that ideal world we could, but not necessarily uh in today's world. Um so really targeting for students who need that extra help or at risk of falling behind. Um we can strengthen the ALA curriculum to ensure students get a rich and diverse reading load, not just novels, but the dreaded um nonfiction as well. Um varied voices, perspectives, lived experiences that challenge students and build empathy to others. Uh as well as, again, critical thinking. We need to monitor those outcomes and oh, gosh, uh and ensure that any cost savings from dropping those programs have been. Or will be reinvested smartly in getting the supports to those same students. So if we saved money in one area, if we can take some of that and put it towards the supports to the underserved students or those that need a little extra support, that would be great.
Wonderful. Alright, I think we'll have our last question tonight. Uh let's see, I guess Tracy, we can have you go first on this one. This is a question from Phil. What is something that you feel BSD is not doing well? How would you contribute to improving that in your role as a board director?
Uh um I think that they are, that BSD is on an amazing path, and I think that um we've got really good people. In some really good roles. I think that they are, we are potentially falling short in our hu- in the focus on human-centered. Um decisions and leadership. I think that uh many times I've seen that we are doing something because we are either supposed to, we have to, or it's the law. Rather than finding out from, again, that personal interaction with students, families, community members. We can accomplish more when we. We can accomplish more when we get more uh brains on a, on a topic. And so if we can do that as humans and really making that an interactive um communication and focusing on that, uh I think that that is gonna drive us in a better direction or or continue, I should say, to drive us in a better direction. I think that it isn't that it isn't happening, I just think that we can do it better. Um one, what would I do to improve that? I, I obviously I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I would hope to have uh more listening sessions where we are listening to families in various subgroups of um the community. So for example, we can uh talk to A L parents and find out what is concerning them, talk to special services parents, talk to gen ed parents, talk to everybody altogether. Um, we can talk to our communities that are multilingual, we can talk to eh all of the different parents and families and community members to find out one, what are some of the issues that they're still feeling, even though we're trying to address those issues? And potentially how they can, eh we can help solve those issues either through the district or through some of our community partners. Thank you for the extra couple of seconds.
Absolutely. That was great, thank you so much. And then Jane, last question to you. What is something that you feel B S D is not doing well? And how would you contribute to improving that in your role as a board director? You're muted.
I will get this right one day. Um. I, every system, including B S D, um has room for improvement. I think there's been a lot of, a great strides that has been made in these recent years. Um, yeah, post-pandemic, we, we learned where we are very short in as far as success. Um. We made few steps, we took few steps forward and we took few steps back and mental health is one of those. Um, but that said, one of the others that I, we had made great strides and I think there's still room for improvement is collaboration and communication with our diverse community. We've done a phenomenal job in making sure that we bring in our community's voice when we did our superintendent selection. We rebuilt our community through the um, our strategic plan. I've been told you're not supposed to do it that way, that we broke the rules as a Bellevue School District and we made it not just school board decision, but a community decision. I think if we continue to move that way, where we are constantly incorporating and intentionally incorporating all the different voices, especially the ones that's co- constantly left behind. I think we will, we'll see the fruit of our labor of closing the gap by making sure that we are elevating, making sure that we're putting them in center of our decision-making.
Wonderful. I just want to thank you both so much for taking the time out tonight to talk with our community. Um, as you know, we're recording this and so we're gonna share it with all of our P T A um uh local P T As to include in their upcoming newsletters and to, to share with families. Uh hopefully we can get the word out to vote and um. Art Mendy, did you have any final comments? We want to thank both our P T S A Council and Lake Hills Neighborhood Association for hosting tonight. And any final words, Mendy? I'm not sure if she's on, so.
Uh, she's not muted, but we can't hear you.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Um yes, thank you Christie, who not only moderated tonight, but did a lot of work um coordinating with our candidates to make all of this come together. Thank you to Steve Kazner at the Lake Hills Neighborhood Association, who was also incredibly helpful um in getting things set up and helping us uh locate important issues to be discussing tonight. And thank you everyone who attended tonight, especially those of you in the chat contributing comments. Um please watch our website, wptsa council dot com. We hope to have this recording up in a few days. And you can share it with your friends and neighbors and help educate our whole community about the wonderful candidates we have. And thank you to Maritri Days for her years of service as a Bellevue staff member and for the past year as a Bellevue uh school board director. Um so best of luck to both of you in November. Thank you everyone and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening.